Good evening. At this time, please check your cell phones and make sure they're silenced. Be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present tonight in the chambers who wish to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form. They are available at the front entrance. In fact, Ms. Forbes up there would probably hand you one if you walked up there. And then, why don't you fill that out? If you could, please give that to our city clerk. Speakers physically present and those also participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. This time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace City Council for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. And just to let everybody know, tonight we will be closing in memory of Ed Gregor. On July 12, Grand Terrace lost a beloved member of our community, and as I mentioned, Ed Gregor is his name. Ed moved to Grand Terrace in 1977, and that was a year before Grand Terrace had become its own city. He lived in the same house on Arless Drive for the next 45 years, and he was a proud Grand Terrace citizen. In fact, he was sort of at unofficial citizens' patrol towards the later years of his life. Ed worked at Bloomington High School, and that's where he graduated from 1966. He worked there from 1971 to 2008, when he retired. During his time at Bloomington High School, he was a history teacher, a coach, and a director of student activities. He enjoyed fishing and camping in the Sierra Nevada Mountains. He's remembered by the Grand Terrace community, along with his family, friends, and former students, as a fond, loving, caring, courageous, and independent person who touched many lives through his compassion, humor, charm, and grit. He leaves behind his loving wife, Betsy. Please keep his family, friends, and of course, his lovely wife in your prayers and good thoughts. And as I mentioned, we will be closing in his memory tonight. So our invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Matthews from the Grandview Baptist Church tonight, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jeff Allen. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, your word tells us to beseech you with petitions and prayers, intercessions and thanksgiving for all men, especially those that are in authority over us. And so tonight, Lord, I thank you for our City Council, the mayor, and councilmen and women that serve this great city here. I pray that you would protect them and guard them, protect them and their families, and guard their heart and their mind. I pray that you would grant them wisdom this evening as they conduct the city's business. I pray that your guiding hand would be on all activities and everything that's discussed this evening. And then, Lord, as we heard of Ed and his passing, I pray especially for his family and the loss that they are experiencing, that pray that you, your Spirit, would comfort them. And thank you again for tonight, the ability to come in a free country and discuss governmental business in an open way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Matthews. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor McNebo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, and so the next item is our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for items to be removed? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to ask for C4.
Okay. All right. Any others? Okay. Would you? I'm looking for a motion for the balance.
Move adoption of the balance of the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. And I don't need to pull an item off. I just wanted to mention, I looked at the check register. I like the detail in there. I noticed some truncation, and so I did talk to Christine about making sure that in the future that we actually get the full benefit of the detail that's in there. And so at this time, we have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So item number four, approve amendment number one to amended and restated agreement with Hirsch and Associates in order to continue contract services for completion of the Blue Mountain Trail. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a few questions about this, and I will direct them, I suppose, to... Should I direct them to the City? You, Mr. City Manager, Ms. Tillman? I'll just ask them, and you can figure out who answers them. But the first question I'd like to know about is, the additional funds that you're asking for in this item, will those be coming from the grant money that we received from the state a couple of years ago, that $2 million grant to make this project happen?
Yes, the grant for this project was $212,000. There was a $1.2 million grant for land acquisition, but the grant for this one was $212,000. We are increasing this to, I believe, $120,000.
So...
It will all come from the grant, yes.
So it's not coming from the general fund?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, I noticed in, on page 124, there's a letter from Hirsch to Ms. Tillman. And in this letter, it says, on the second sentence, "Based on our discussion is my understanding that the city wishes to develop the trailhead and parking lot at the original proposed location on city-owned property at Van Buren and Observation." So are we now focused, again, on that piece of property to try to make the trailhead there?
That is the property. That will be the trailhead.
So...
So part of the expenditures that happened with this was evaluating alternative sites.
Right. And those alternative sites, are they still in the game, any?
No.
In the interest? No?
No. We're going to... At some point, we have to pick our spot and engage in this, and this is the spot. We own the property. At the very least, it's a nice, flat piece of property. We can put a restroom and a small park facility. Ideally, we will then continue the trail. We're working with some property owners on the hillside to acquire a big chunk of the hillside and tie that in. Part of the trail will be challenging to construct, and there will be a lot of switchbacks. It's not the easiest place, but we own the land. We're acquiring the rest of the land, and it's the place... At some point, we've got to put the flag in the ground and say, this is where we're at. This is the time we're doing this.
Yeah, I just, I remember, though, that there were some concerns with that in the last time we discussed it, because two of the main concerns were the residents of Cardinal, who were not hip to the idea of having a trail running along their backyard, and it could never, ever, ever be made ADA accessible. Not that the one we have now is, however. You can, you know, this one, there would never be any hope. And also, the actual, I remember listening to the surveyor from her saying, "This is a very, very challenging piece of ground to try to put a trail of any kind on." So I don't know. I mean, it just seems to me like those alternative interests that were there that made... I mean, is that door completely closed?
So the two alternative sites, one is Dr. Sigistad's property. He doesn't want any part of selling it. The other property is Dennis Kidd's property behind his avocado groves. He doesn't want any part of people walking up that close to his grove. So essentially, those alternatives are off the market. The site itself, the trail will probably never be ADA compliant because of the slope, and it's sand and rock and washes it out. So that really isn't an issue. Yes, it will be challenging to make those first couple of moves up the mountain, make those switchbacks. And we worked with Hirsch. We think that we can get enough screening adjacent to the trail so that, over time, we can get some plants and vegetation that grows in to screen those people on Cardinal.
I understand about that. Okay. I didn't think that there was ever, I never heard that purchasing any of the Sigistad property was ever part of the idea. It was just having, using, having it available, being made available to us by the property owner in exchange for, you know, there was some development ideas and all that stuff. It was never, I'd never heard any of that being brought into discussion, that, well, we can buy some of his land.
So he is not interested in selling?
No.
He's not interested in having people walking across his property? He's concerned about liability issues. And that's one of the reasons that we're also purchasing the land on the hillside, because the current owner has issues about liability as well. If somebody's on the trail, it's on their property, although we can call it a city right-of-way, we can whatever. They are concerned that there will be some liability fallout should something happen to them. So it needs to stay on city property. There has been some discussion with individuals representing Dr. Sigistad about some development on the site. It's very preliminary and very, just more back of a napkin than real, than anything tangible. But if that develops, part of the discussion is that there will be an addition to the trail path somewhere from Dr. Sigistad's property. The other piece we're looking at is there's some discussion for development on the back side of the hill off of Westwood, and part of that requirement for them was that they will cluster the homes, create a small trailhead with a parking lot, and connect the trail from that as well. So ideally, if all the pieces fall together, we will have three ways to get to the top. But right now, we have one way that we know we can get, and the grant money is running out. Sooner or later, we're going to have to give it back if we don't use it. And the last thing I want to do is give that money back. And so it may be the hard path, but we're taking the hard path because it's the path we know we can do.
Well, okay, it was just some questions I had, so I thank you for, you know, going into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions at this time? All right. Any requests to speak from members of the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. And so I will bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
So, Mayor, I'll move item C4.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen and two seconds, one by Mayor Pro Tem Hussey and the other one by Councilmember Wilson.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to public comment. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Okay. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Restrictions in California law state that the council may not discuss or act on any item that is not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. A request of brief response from staff may be made to questions raised during public comment, and an item may be requested to be agendized at a future meeting. And so we have Ms. Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. City Manager, I'd like to thank you for the meeting that we're going to have next week. I appreciate that. We're having a neighborhood meeting. Not everyone might know about it, but if you live in our area west of the freeway, please attend. It's going to be held at the fitness park, and you may contact me or the City Manager. I don't know if it's on the website or not for date and time, because I don't have it in front of me. We have an issue with fireworks in our neighborhood. It has to stop. Somebody has to get this guy to stop blowing up whatever he's using. They're not going up in the sky. He's making bombs, randomly setting them off, making the neighborhood crazy. It's not okay. And so I call the sheriff all the time on it. Other neighbors are calling as well. Lieutenant Lane's going to be brought into it. If he's not yet, I don't see him sitting here right now, but it's just not okay, and it's a disturbance to our neighborhood. I don't even know how far away it can be heard, but it happens all the time. And the street sweeper is still doing a lousy job, so please get on him. He doesn't use water when he cleans the streets. All he does is create dust. Thank you very much. I look forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Mr. City Manager, did you want to address a couple of those issues?
Lieutenant Lane is aware of the fireworks, and we've touched base on that and discussed some of the, having some additional patrols those hours of the evening. It looks like they're about 10, 11 o'clock at night, 9, 10 o'clock, something like that. So we'll get some officers in that area and see what we can do. It just becomes a matter of having the right guy in the right place, catching that guy, but we are aware of it, and we're working with it. And the street sweeper, we have been, although we are in a drought, we've been encouraging him to use the water, and we will continue to do so. I've seen some videos from a couple places, and that's not acceptable.
All right. Thank you. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment. We'll return to our agenda. Our first item under new business is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing regarding objections or protests to collecting delinquent refuse sewer and rental inspection fees on the tax rolls for affected properties. Adoption of a resolution to collect said delinquent fees on the tax roll and for the placement of assessments for said delinquent fees on properties located in the city for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And so the project, or the process will follow. Chair states the public hearing item, which I just did. So I'm going to ask for any announcement of ex parte communications, conflicts of interest, and/or recusals at this time from the council. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. I will ask for a staff presentation and recommendation. We will ask questions of staff. Then we will open the public hearing to allow testimony in favor of or against. We will close public hearing, and then we will deliberate on the item, and then we will vote. So, Ms. Shanita Tillman, Management Analyst.
Thank you, Mayor McNebo. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, Shanita Tillman, Management Analyst. As stated, this public hearing is to discuss the placement of assessment liens on properties with delinquent refuse sewer and rental inspection fee accounts. This report supports the following 2030 vision goal. Number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for sewer, trash, and rental inspection services previously rendered. This item is reflected in our Grand Terrace Municipal Code in Chapters 5.42 Integrated Waste Management, 5.80 Nonowner Occupied/Rental Property Program, and 13.08 Sewer User Charges. Refuse in sewer fees are assessed through our partnership with BRTAC and the City of Colton, and rental property fees are collected by the City of Grand Terrace Code Enforcement. And all delinquent accounts are submitted to the county tax assessor. As of July 15, there was 202 delinquent refuse in sewer accounts equalling over $95,886. And as of July 15, there were five delinquent commercial sewer accounts equalling over In the City of Grand Terrace, there are 274 single-family rental properties, 46 condos, 15 apartments, five or more units, 21 duplexes, five triplexes, and 24 plexes totaling 381 properties. As of July 15, there were 32 delinquent rental accounts equalling over $4,029. Staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing to hear appeals of delinquent fees that are proposed for the assessment on tax rolls of the county assessors. And two, adopt a resolution adopting a report of delinquent refuse sewer user fees and a report of delinquent nonowner occupied rental property fees, directing that such delinquent fees be collected on a tax roll and be imposed as an assessment upon property within the City of Grand Terrace. Thank you, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Okay. Now, how did you notify owners of the property that they were delinquent?
So owners are notified by certified mail. For rental properties, staff submits those letters ourselves, and then for the commercial accounts, and the refuse, BRTAC handles that, and they send off certified letters as well.
Okay. And so did you have any response from those letters? I see this is quite a list.
No.
Okay. And then, what is the last day for owners to submit a payment before this goes on the tax rolls?
So we will accept payment, our first official letter that's, excuse me, list that's submitted to the county is on August 10, and so approximately 10 days before then.
Okay, so if we approve this tonight, there's still a little bit of time?
Correct.
All right. Further questions? All right. Thank you. So we will open it up to the public to allow testimony in favor or against this public hearing item. Do we have any requests to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we will close the public hearing portion, and we'll bring it back to council for their deliberation and...
Mayor?
And possibly a motion. Councilmember Allen?
I'll make a motion to move staff recommendations one, two, and three.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Hussey. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have a vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Tillman. All right, so we have no unfinished business, no further new business. We have no request for future agenda items, so we will go to City Council for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I attended the Cal City Speaker Series on the 19th, and the speaker, I was very excited to attend this. The speaker is former mayor of Stockton, Michael Tubbs, who's now a special advisor to Governor Gavin Newsom. Also, he's the founder of an organization called Mayors for Guaranteed Income and End of Poverty in California, which is a coalition of California city mayors dedicated to improving the lives of all Californians. And, you know, he's became famous as being the youngest mayor of a major American city when he was elected to Stockton. He was 26, and he was the first African-American mayor. And he also implemented a guaranteed income program for the city. So anyways, I was looking forward to that speaker series. Unfortunately, it seemed like the host, I wanted to learn as much as possible what the Governor Newsom and the state is working on with him in this regard, with economic mobility and opportunity, which is what his title is. But apparently, the speaker host was more interested in him telling about his growing up history and all. So we learned all about his childhood and not very much about the future for the state that he can help us with. But anyway, it was a good speaker series. And then, I also attended the Inland Empire Community Foundation's Second Policy and Engagement Forum on the 21st, and they had five separate forum breakout sessions after the main, I mean, the main speaker that I listened to, Representative Mark DiCanno, he addressed all of us and talked about the importance of collaborating together with other government entities and to make it, by combining smaller grants into larger grants, and those are much easier for him to get passed, and to always ask for the most money possible. Those are the two things I took away from his, what he talked about. But the breakout session I attended was economic opportunity and growth and the Inland Empire. There were others on housing, education, health, and the environment. But the economic growth and opportunity session, I was very impressed with the people that were addressing us there. Sean Varner of Varner Associates led the group, and in particular, there was a woman named Jackie Melendez. You probably know her, i.e. Go organization, Inland Empire Growth and Opportunity. I think that that's an organization and something to really watch, because she's really got a plan for really helping out the Inland Empire, and I think it's a really good thing. And I'm glad that I attended that forum.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended a event down in La Palma with our honorable mayor, and it was an opportunity to be exposed to the JPIA inner workings. And during that timeframe, it's their annual meeting, so they re-described a lot of the things that the individuals that are the movers in that organization accomplish and are in the process of trying to accomplish. They run over their mission and so on. The food was terrific. The company was great. It was, overall, it was a very good experience, and I appreciated the opportunity to go as an alternate. And our mayor has accepted a position in the steering committee, so I think we're going to have some say in relation to some of the things that take place. But it's very much a safeguard kind of situation, and I think it's important to us. So again, that's pretty much what I have for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to emphasize for Ed Gregor, you know, I met Mr. Gregor when we were on the Bond Oversight Committee together, and we were working to make sure our high school was built the correct way. And, you know, so I really got to know him, really good guy, and his wife, Betsy, and then, of course, Roger Kowalski. They're best friends, and, you know, we talked about fishing. But what you were saying about the, he was like a citizen patrol. He would drive around all around town. I told him I was going to get a magnetic sign and put it on his car, but he said no. So, but really good guy, you know, it's my heart and prayers go out to Betsy and the family and friends and the situation. But, you know, just, just God bless him, and, you know, just keep him in their prayers, and, you know, I'm going to miss Ed. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hussey. And I will just add a little bit more to the Joint Powers Insurance Authority Annual Board Meeting. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wilson, for attending and learning a whole lot more about the insurance pool that we are in. These annual meetings are very good at reiterating all of the value that they offer their members. One of the things that they talked about, and this is fairly new, through the event of COVID, they started doing a lot of their training online, and they started to set up a studio within the building that they have so that they could do really high-quality training. And now that they are coming back to the office, they found they didn't want to take down the equipment and then have to put it back up. And so they're acquiring a building right next door so they can outfit it with this type of production studio and create even more training that is then available on demand as well as when they do their training classes. As it is right now, there's a whole catalog of training that we can access as members that are very helpful for risk management in so many different areas of the city. They also, as members, offer an assessment that they'll do on ADA compliance, and then to help cities get their, member agencies get to full compliance, those that are not quite there yet, they offer very, very low-cost financing to help them get those projects done. And so it's a really, really good pool to belong to, and they are very selective about the cities that become members. And so that helps to keep the risk down for the member agencies, and they are very innovative in the way that they move forward. So I always enjoy being there again to hear some more of that, although I am part of the executive committee, so I have a monthly meeting where I do get to hear about many different things like claims, and then how we're doing month by month as far as our financial standings. And we are in a very good position. We also get to hear from our third-party administrators as far as the claims that they're working through and the speed at which they are closing those accounts so that they don't just keep them forever. That is one of their metrics that we look at and we care about is, you know, how many... how many cases you have open and how long have they been open? And so they really are charged with making sure that they get a good negotiation and, and please those that have the claims in there. All right, so I will end there and ask our city manager for his communications.
Two things. We will have the, the three-day rave in San Bernardino, so all of you that are into EDM music will be enjoying that. This time, we are, the promoter is putting up his sound monitoring equipment. This time, the city is also engaging a company to put up sound monitoring to validate the, the promoter's equipment and, and readings, to, just to make sure everybody's, is playing the right, the right way. Anyway, the rave will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, so it'll be a treat. And thank you, Bobby Forbes. The, I will be out at the fitness park Thursday night, the 28th, at 6:00 PM, and meeting with the neighbors to hear about fireworks and truck routes and street sweepers and anything else they got going on, and hopefully we can address the issues as they come up and at least be aware of what's going on so we can take care of it. I'm looking forward to it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we do have a closed session tonight. We have two items. The first one is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, titled City Attorney. Item number two is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1 also. But this one is titled City Manager. And so for those of you that will not be here when we come back, please remember that we are closing in memory of Ed Gregor, and that our next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, August 9th, at 6:00 PM, right here. And any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess. Met and closed session on two items. A city attorney, public employee performance evaluation, and a city manager, public employee evaluation. We have no reportable actions. We did give direction to staff, and so at this time, we will adjourn to our regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, August 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting will be, is closing in memory of Ed Gregor. For our next meeting, any request to have an item placed on that or a future agenda must be placed in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. We are adjourned.